At six o'clock, I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask everyone to please rise for Pledge of Allegiance and prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, and we thank you for this community and everyone in it. We come to you this hour asking for your blessing and help as we are gathered together to conduct city business. Guide and direct us in everything that we say and that we do, and we thank you for all that you do for us. It's in Jesus's name that we pray. Amen.
Amen.
All right, time for a little call. I am present. Alderwoman Dent?
Here.
Alderman Bowlerjack?
Present.
Alderman Whelan is absent. Alderwoman Cisco?
Present.
City Administrator Burbidge?
Present.
City Clerk Koller?
Present.
City Attorney Weber is absent. Director of Public Works Payne. Chief of Police Chase? Finance Director Stacy Houston. And I see that we have Jared as Code Enforcement. And we have any other city staff here. All right. Next up, we'll need an approval of tonight's agenda.
I move that we approve the agenda.
Actually, there will be a couple adjustments that we need to make. We'll need to remove Bill Number 3627. That's regarding the property on 1305 East Third Street. And then, it's been requested to do two readings of the other two bills, Bill Number 3628 and then Bill Number 3629. Is that right? No? Just the one? Okay.
We can go ahead and do the first reading of the 13.
Oh, we can go ahead and do the first reading? Oh, that's right. Okay. Okay. I got you.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. And was there?
Oh, so we need to pull 3628, not 27.
So that was 27, since Kay would have to abstain.
She'll have to abstain on 3627. So we can do a first reading there. 3628, 22.
Two readings, okay. All right, I follow now.
All right.
So Catherine, if you want to amend your motion, or if you want me to make a motion?
I move that we approve the agenda as amended.
Okay. And I'll second.
I'll call for the vote. Alderwoman Dent?
Yes.
Alderman Bowlerjack?
Yes.
Alderwoman Cisco?
I don't know how I need to vote for this. Just, yes, okay. I wasn't sure with the amendments with the one being amended, so, okay.
All right.
Sorry for the confusion.
Next up is the approval of tonight's consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
I will call for the vote. Alderman Bowlerjack?
Yes.
Alderwoman Cisco?
Yes.
Alderwoman Dent?
Yes.
All right, next up is public comment. We don't have anybody. Public comment. Moving right along, next up is road closure for, first up is a request for Grace Community Church. They requested permission to block off the 600 South Water from the south end of their parking lot to the corner of Water and Franklin for the purpose of the church-wide harvest party to be held October 20th from the hours from 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. And that would have been Ms. Sherri Toon that asked the board's consideration for this.
I move to approve the request.
I second the motion.
I will call for the vote. Alderman Bowlerjack?
Yes.
Alderwoman Dent?
Yes.
Alderwoman Cisco?
Yes.
Next up is the road closure request for the trunk retreat, and I believe this one is for Fourth Street. Correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And I think this is the third annual trunk retreat there on Fourth Street?
I believe so.
And I've always heard it's a good success, and it's a good safety thing for the kiddos as well.
It's growing every year. I've participated in the last two years, and the businesses that are participating and the children that are participating, it's been quite a, quite a good show. So I would move to approve the street closure for Fourth Street for the trunk or treat on Halloween, and that's from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m.
I'll second the motion.
I will call for the vote. Alderwoman Cisco?
Yes.
Alderman Bowlerjack?
Yes.
Alderwoman Dent?
Yes.
All right, next up, we have a request to use the old fairgrounds for the FFA Field Day. You have the...
I don't see it. So this did go before the Park and Rec Board. They did recommend approval. I do not have any details about that.
I did.
Can you come up to the mic? Sorry. Thank you.
Hi, Tracy. I thought that was you.
Yeah. So it's for Fourth Street, the FFA Forestry Field Day, and they have requested to be able to use that old fairgrounds to be able to set out. They'll have wood splitting, log roll, the old, the old stuff, crosscut saw, some chainsaw competitions. We previously had it at the Ag Building, and we're kind of running out of room over there, so they asked that we be able to use the fairgrounds. It'd be about, from probably 9:00 a.m. to about 1:00 p.m.
Okay. What's the date on it?
I can look at my phone. My life is on my calendar. It's going to be on the 19th of October. It'll be a Saturday.
Sounds like a lot of fun. What kind of liabilities do we have to worry about as the city for the events taking place on the old fairgrounds?
Well, I guess my first question, this area is going to be completely roped off where the public can't just walk through, right?
So the public will be able to view, like they'll be able to watch?
Right.
But we'll have certain areas that, like, we block off areas where they warm up their chainsaws, and they have to stay in that area with adult supervision, so the general public are not going in that area. It's just a students-only, a few at a time. We have usually have Brad Jadwin or somebody else that's a pretty experienced person with the logging, et cetera, to come in. I don't know that I'll be able to be there because I'll be working another job, but we'll have, both of our advisors and our other alumni members will be there. But they'll have quite a bit of supervision, and we've had this event several years.
Gotcha. And so this is being, sorry, being a school club covered under school insurance for anything that happens?
Would we need any forms signed by the students and their parents?
I just need a waiver of liability from some Lake School.
Okay.
And I have those.
Perfect.
Okay. I can either let Heather or Dalton know. They're both driving a bus tonight, so they're like, tag your it.
Thank you. That's all the questions I had.
Thank you, Tracy. This time we'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the request.
I'll second.
Is there any other further questions? I'll call for the vote. Alderman Bowlerjack?
Yes.
Alderwoman Cisco?
Yes.
And Alderwoman Dent?
Yes.
All right, next up is a request for the use of the old middle school property. I believe this is the one for the Bone Break Center. I think it's for...
October 26th.
Yeah, October 26th. Hello, ladies.
Hi. So we would like to use it for parking on October 26th. We have a big Halloween event happening at the Bone Break. And I don't know if you've seen our parking lot, but it's really small.
And there's nowhere to park on the street either.
Okay.
We're expecting a big turnout. There's going to be food vendors and craft vendors, a haunted trail, face painting, pony rides. We're going to have a lot of things to offer and really know where to put the cars.
And which date is it that you guys are having this event?
October.
26th.
26th?
Yeah, it's a Saturday.
Okay.
From about noon until about 11:30 at night.
Okay.
And Steve, if we're allowed to, you may have to get back with somebody in your crew, but if we allowed them to park in that area, that lot, would that damage anything over there that we should be concerned about?
I haven't walked into the city, but I can do that.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, the Bone Break also had requested and used the middle school property for parking for Libby's services when she had passed away. So I mean, it's, it has been used before.
Okay.
I just wanted to make sure we didn't, you know, bust anything or...
Right.
Any safety concerns or anything like that?
Thank goodness we're having it for a long period of time. It's a pretty good walk. At least for us, they're out of shape.
We're going to have a, we're going to have a shuttle.
Yeah, to bring people back and...
Oh, okay. Well, then I might attend then.
Come show your support.
All right, I think that's all we need then.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
Thanks, ladies.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
I would move to approve the Bone Break Center to utilize the old middle school grounds. And Steve, if you could just walk there and make sure nothing's changed from the last event that we do not need to take precaution on, please. Thank you.
I second the motion.
All right, this time I'll call for the vote. Alderwoman Cisco?
Yes.
Alderwoman Dent?
Yes.
And Alderman Bowlerjack?
Yes.
Thank you. Next up, we have a board appointment, and it's for the Housing Authority. Mr. Joe Brand will be resigning. I think that his term is not up until February the 15th of 2027. And the Housing Authority has recommended Ms. Danielle Kissir to be appointed to fill the remainder of Mr. Brand's term.
I would move to approve Danielle Kissir to take the place of Mr. Brand on the board of the Housing Authority. And I want to thank Mr. Brand for all the time that he's dedicated to the Housing Authority to serve on the board.
I second the motion.
I'll call for the vote. Alderwoman Cisco?
Yes.
Alderman Bowlerjack?
Yes.
Alderwoman Dent?
Yes.
Thank you. Next up, we have bids for the limestone rock bid approval.
Good evening, board members, mayor. Let's see, I've got a few of these, so... Limestone Rock. The project description facts, limestone rock is used to fill holes when the water and sewer department dig out for water leaks and sewer repairs. It's also used by the construction department when they pour new curbs, gutters, and sidewalks. The electric department uses it when they set electrical poles as well, so real pivotal for all of our operations. Procurement, they were able to get three bids or price lists from Capital Quarries, Melrose Quarry, and HCH Quarry. You can see the various pricings per ton. Fiscal impacts, this will come out of the street maintenance department's fund, line item 100-515-46530. There's $40,000 budgeted for street maintenance in the street department. The department's recommended motion would be to approve purchase of limestone rock from Capital Quarries, the Salem Quarry, for $11,000. This quarry is much closer to Salem, resulting in less turnaround time, fuel costs, and labor costs, so...
All right. Tom, I'll open it up for the board. If you have any discussion?
I don't.
No discussion? Ryan, do I have a motion?
I move to approve the purchase of limestone from Capital Quarries for $11,000.
Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
I will call for the vote. Alderwoman Dent?
Yes.
Alderman Bowlerjack?
Yes.
Alderwoman Cisco?
Yes.
Next up is the rock salt bidder.
Okay, similar. Project description facts, we mix rock salt with pea gravel to help melt ice snow during the winter weather events. It's also essential for traction, resulting in safer travels on the city streets. They put it out for bid. Compass Minerals came in at $7,386. Rock Salt USA for 75 tons came in at $9,450, and Kansas Salt came in at 75 tons for $7,200. The fiscal impact of this will be, come out of the chemical supplies and street department, where there was $16,500 budgeted for this. The department recommends that we move to approve the purchase of rock salt from Compass Minerals for approximately $7,386, because they've used them in the past, and they know the quality of service, product, and delivery time professionalism that they get from them, so... As you can see, yes, there is a bid for $7,200 from Kansas Salt, and I asked, you know, were they closer and whatnot, you know, due diligence? And they are not, in fact, the difference is negligible, but the, basically, the street department has worked with Compass Minerals and feels like they're the better company, so...
Have they ever worked with the Kansas Salt LLC before?
I cannot tell you that. And unfortunately, the street superintendent would be here to discuss tonight, but he is taking care of some very important business at home.
Absolutely.
I mean, considering that it's, we're not quite ice and snow season, I mean, I could get you, you know, firmer answer, or have Brent come in and speak to this at the next meeting.
For a less than $200 difference, I mean, I would go with the department's recommended recommendation here, and I move to approve the purchase of rock salt from Compass Minerals for $7,386.
I'll second that.
All right. Is there any further discussion?
Nope.
All right, I will call for the vote. Alderman Bowlerjack?
Yes.
Alderwoman Cisco?
Yes.
And Alderwoman Dent?
Yes.
Next up, fire hydrant bid.
Okay, this is a bid that I'd worked on to put out. As you know, where fire hydrants needed attention across the city. This bid was the only bid that came in. There are very few companies. I reached out to at least eight different vendors trying to find someone to do maintenance across the board. We have roughly, well, I'd say 290 fire hydrants across the city, and, yeah. This was the bid that came in. This is a company I'd talked to at length, aside from one other individual who has since retired and gave me a lot of great information, and this is, this bid turned out pretty good. The company specializes in fire hydrant maintenance. They'll basically go out, they shouldn't have to do any clearing around fire hydrants, but they will if they have to in the bid. Oil grease, the bonnet with food gray mineral oil grease. Check the outlet threads to ensure that they're good and lubricated. Install a city-provided reflective ring to make them easily visible to firefighters at night. Document the condition of all hydrants, leaks, damage, and worn-out bonnet. And we do have that documented, but that documentation is a little long in the tooth, a little old, so I want to make sure we're, you know, we have good factual data. Double-check the mapping of all hydrants. We have that on diamond maps. We'll be double-checking that, make sure it's good. And then they, so basically, they will come in, do the maintenance across all the hydrants, and then come back in the spring and paint all the hydrants with an oil-based paint for longevity. Warranty one year on the paint, and this would improve the overall street infrastructure for Salem as far as safety for fire hydrants and fire service. Procurement bids were advertised in Salem News on September 10th and posted the city's website, and this was the only one that came in. Fiscal impact, fire hydrant rehabilitation was included in the current water department budget in the amount of $20,000. Staff proposes pulling the additional funds from the water department equipment repair line to supplement the bid that came in at $26,100. That's roughly $85 per hydrant. So move, and this is, I realize that if I, if I had more crew members, this is something we can move through the city and do, but it would take, I don't, I can't even, I couldn't even tell you how long at this point, because we're, we're doing a lot of fixes and repairs. So anyway, staff proposes pulling the additional funds and funding this if you approve, move to approve the bid from Fire Hydrant Services in the amount of $26,100.
And with this being a safety item, I think we need to make this a priority, even if there is the difference of $6,000. And, and I move to approve the bid from Fire Hydrant Services and Repair in the amount of $26,100, knowing that there will be a budget adjustment for that.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? I'll call for the vote. Alderman Bowlerjack?
Yes.
Alderwoman Cisco?
Yes.
And Alderwoman Dent?
Yes.
Next up is the tree trimming bid.
Are we tired of hearing me yet? So, this, this was huge. This is our project description for the approval of the bid for the power line tree trimming. City staff have identified the need for electrical line. Tree trimming is a major maintenance activity necessary to provide quality services to our community. The feeder lines probably have not been trimmed and maintained in five-plus years, from what I understand. There are two levels of tree trimming the city is engaging in to reduce the number of limbs and trees, lines, trees and limbs falling on lines, and to reduce the access to the lines and other sensitive electrical equipment by squirrels and other wildlife. With the city electric crew being fully staffed, one lineman and one groundsman apprentice lineman are dedicated to doing small-spot tree trimming in town to eliminate hazards mentioned above. These are individual jobs that residents request work orders, resident requested work orders for crews to clear limbs and branches from lines in their yards. Anyway, long story long, basically, this is to focus on the main feeder lines, we have, of which we have four, and we wanted to map out a plan and get this maintenance started this year, and just continuously, at a hundred thousand dollars a year, move around the city and make sure those lines are as clear as possible. So we put this out for bid, and we had two bids come in, one that came in at... It was 186, I don't have it on here. Sorry, on the backside. $189,200 by Forester Works LLC. And Kendall Vegetation Services came in at half a million dollars. So they both went out and surveyed feeder line one, and that's their bid, so... Fiscal impacts, tree trimming was included in this year's budget and the CIP for the next four years at $100,000 a year. Contractors good with splitting the bid and performing line clearing on the, this is Forester, line clearing on the west side of Highway 19 and Long North Highway 19 in the current budget year. Line number two on the bid, and providing the line clearing on the east side of Highway 19 after July 1st, 2025, in the fiscal year '26 budget, line three in the bid. When applying the local business preference multiplier of .95 is listed on the bid amounts for the current year, the bid would be $99,067.90. And for FY '26, it would total $80,484. So the, basically, Forester is willing to work with us and split that into two fiscal years so that they can get that feeder line number one knocked out. This also builds a relationship that they're, they're a local company, and they're also doing work for Inter County, so it's, it's good for the city, so... Department recommended motion would be to move for approval for the bid for Forester Works LLC in the amount of $189,200 for feeder line trimming in the amount of $189,200 to be split between fiscal years '25 and '26. That's a lot. Sorry.
We thank you for that. So, of course, there's a significant price difference between the two bidders here. Do you know what the difference is on that?
I didn't calculate it. I've got my phone here, if you want to...
What do you mean, what the difference is?
I mean, there's a significant difference. Is there a reason why one bid higher compared to the other?
No, no fuel cost savings.
Yeah, Kendall's, Kendall's, I don't, yeah, I couldn't tell you.
Kendall's out of Georgia, so I don't, I don't know how much that put a factor. Again, they didn't break that down for mobilization and everything on the bids.
And it's a, I would think it's a hard thing to bid, because you've got, you know, long stretches that have no trees to trim, and then you get into some really, really thick stuff, and then you get into residential areas. So the way we wrote it was so that they would have two bucket crews and a supervisor, so they could have a supervisor on the ground to talk to residents if there were questions or, you know, issues with, you know, because this will be, this will be through areas where, you know, some of the trees that people really like might be in the lines, and, you know, so...
And you've said that Forester Works, they've done work for Inter County Electric?
They do, yes. Yeah. Inter County uses a couple, two, three different vendors, I think, but I had reached out and asked, and they, they were really happy with them, so...
Okay. That's, that's one of my questions, because I didn't see any references on there, so I didn't know if they've done this kind of work in the past or not, but knowing that they've done work for Inter County, I...
Good feedback about Kendall as well. Kendall's a corporation, you know, they, they're across several states doing it. I want to say Forester's more of a, I think he's out of West Plains. I think they're...
Local.
Local, yeah.
And I might also add, Steve and Josh visited more than once with Matt from Inter County, and he helped us in developing our bid packet as well.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
Trying to, Matt's, Matt's helping us a lot with, you know, mapping out, developing a, a plan, basically a five-year plan to make sure we're, everything should be on a five-year plan, but this wasn't, so we're going to work on that and make sure we have it mapped out, so.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Were we able to save some costs from our own tree trimming crew?
Uh, we're, I don't know.
Some of those.
I don't know about saving costs. I mean, our tree trimming crews catching up on a lot of work orders, so we're definitely getting a bang for our buck there.
I didn't know if they'd be assisting, you know, any of this.
No, because this will be main feeder line stuff, and then what breaks off to residential areas, you know, homes.
Well, they take care of the small stuff. These guys take care of the big projects.
And the nice part is when we go through this winter, if we have a substantial ice storm, with a vendor like this working with us, we may be able to shift them to assisting if we have some, if we have a bad ice storm, so.
I see that Kendall has the liability insurance, and I'm assuming that Forester does as well.
Yes.
Yes, the.
Did I miss it in the packet?
Yeah.
I was just looking for it.
Yeah, I believe it should be in the packet.
They, they did.
So it is something that, and it's noted in the staff summary, but it's not in the packet. So if, it was noted in the staff summary in the initial bid proposal, we had requested the insurance and the E-HAP training, I think is what it was called. So there were two or three things that we requested. They didn't submit it in the bid packet.
Okay.
But they, I reached out to them later, and given the price difference, I felt like since they did have it and did provide it, that's still staff's recommendation is to go with, with Forester.
I just want to make sure, I didn't see the actual.
Yeah, my apologies.
It's okay.
They have provided the insurance, they've provided the E-HAP training, they actually provided some additional training as well, some certification, so everything that was requested in the bid packet was provided.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Steve.
You're welcome. I think I'm up next again, right?
Oh, yeah, you probably are. So do I have a motion for the tree trimming bid?
I'd move to approve the bid from Forester Works for the amount of $189,002 for feeder line tree trimming.
I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion? I will call for the vote. Alderwoman-Cisco?
Yes.
Alderman-Bollardt?
Yes.
Alderwoman-Dent?
Yes.
Next up is our new and miscellaneous business for the next grid water modules invoice. So it's not you. Go sit down.
Okay, so this is for, we have 135 water meter, water modules that are no longer working. These modules still have some warranty left on them, so we will ship those back to Next Grid, and then they will repair them, replace the batteries, ship them back to us at a prorated cost. So I've talked to our service tech, and I guess with all of our communication issues that we have in certain areas, the battery life on these modules just don't last that 10 years that they are supposed to last. So we are asking for approval to ship these 135 modules back at the prorated cost.
All right. This time I'll open it up for board discussion. No discussion. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the purchase of 135 water meter modules at a prorated cost from Next Grid.
I'll second that.
I will call for the vote. Alderman-Bollardt?
Yes.
Alderwoman-Cisco?
Yes.
Alderwoman-Dent?
Yes.
And next up is the conditional use approval.
Good evening. Last Tuesday, October the first, Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing regarding conditional use for an in-home business. Michael Nivens is the applicant 1402 South Water. His intention is to have a custom gunsmithing operation out of his home, would be by appointment only Monday through Friday, 5 to 8 o'clock PM. They voted unanimously to approve that. The, it will be regulated under the ATF, I'm sure some other government organizations, but then the first step in the process is to have approval by the city for that location. So that's what we're asking for.
Open it up for board discussion. All right, do I have a motion for the conditional use permit?
I move to approve the conditional use permit.
Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
There's no further discussion? I will call for the vote. Alderwoman-Dent?
Yes.
Alderman-Bollardt?
Yes.
Alderwoman-Cisco?
Yes.
Thank you, Jared. Next up is the approval for MRPC to provide technical assistance.
Resolution number.
So this is an agreement with the city and MRPC for them to manage our CDBG grant. That is the grant that was approved at our last meeting. And the CDBG requirements, has several requirements that we are not familiar with, so MRPC will ensure that we remain in compliance with all the guidelines and regulations for this funding.
All right.
More questions on that?
No, I'll re-announce it though for you, Tammy.
I'm sorry.
This is for resolution 25-2024. Just had to keep scrolling.
Resolution number 25-2024, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement between the City of Salem, Missouri and the Merrimack Regional Planning Commission for Technical Assistance Services.
Thank you. This time, is there any discussion?
No.
All right, do I have a motion for resolution 25-2024?
I move to approve resolution number 25-2024.
Do I have a second?
I second the motion.
It's time I'll call for the vote. Alderman-Bollardt?
Yes.
Alderwoman-Dent?
Yes.
Alderwoman-Cisco?
Yes.
All right. Let's go through some first readings. First reading for bill number 3627.
Bill number 3627, an ordinance to allow the subdivision of 1305 East Third, a part of the south half of the northeast quarter of Section 18, Township 34 North, range 5 West of the 5th PM, Dent County, Missouri, Michael and Destiny Love Day owners.
Thank you. Jerry, would you like to talk about that?
I'm not sure if you had questions, but I'm going to go ahead and explain it anyway. This is a minor subdivision of a lot over on East First Street. Essentially, we taking the western, sorry, the eastern 60 feet of the property and dividing it off. Mr. Love Day would be retaining ownership of that, selling the other part.
And you said it was East First Street?
Yes.
Okay, so I think in the language in the bill has Third Street.
Oh, yeah, that should definitely be First Street.
Okay.
That may be my fault from the, I had a misprint on the planning and zoning agenda, so I bet we just transferred that right on over.
Okay, I guess we can just admit net for the second reading?
Mm-hmm. That'll be my fault, sorry.
That'll be good.
I can read, I can read again with the correct language, and it would still be considered a version.
Okay, yeah.
Bill number 3627, an ordinance to allow the subdivision of 1305 East First Street, a part of the south half of the northeast quarter of Section 18, Township 34 North, range 5 West of the 5th PM, Dent County, Missouri, Michael and Destiny Love Day owners.
Thank you. Thank you. I'll do the first reading of the next tier, or you want me to do the back-to-back?
3628 would be too.
Yeah. Okay, so you only need one first reading for 3627?
Correct.
Okay.
Alderman, Whalen not in attendance.
Okay.
Alderwoman-Cisco would have to abstain.
Okay.
Bill number 3628, an ordinance to allow the subdivision of 1311 East Third Street, a fractional part of the northeast quarter, quarter of the Section 18, Township 34 North, range 5 West of the 5th PM, Dent County, Missouri, Rick Stiegel owner. Is that Third Street as well, or is that First?
This one's, this one's Third.
Okay. Permission to read second reading by caption only.
Yes, please.
Bill number 3628, an ordinance to allow the subdivision of 1311 East Third Street, a fractional part of the northeast quarter of Section 18, Township 34 North, range 5 West of the 5th PM, Dent County, Missouri, Rick Stiegel owner.
Okay, so this one is, again, a minor subdivision of a lot over on East Third Street. The lots would be 73.75 feet each in width, and 108 feet, between 108 and 109 feet deep. The intention there is to build two single-family residences, and I think one, Mr. Stiegel's going to build one for himself and then one for his mother as well, if my memory serves me correctly.
All right. It's time, do I have a motion for bill number 3628?
I move to approve bill number 3628.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
There's no discussion? I will call for the vote. Alderman-Bollardt?
Yes.
Alderwoman-Cisco?
Yes.
And Alderwoman-Dent?
Yes.
Next up is bill number 3629.
Bill number 3629, an ordinance authorizing the City of Salem to enter into a grant agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for the Airport Infrastructure Grant Program for the Development of Airport Improvements at the Salem Memorial Airport, authorizing execution of necessary documents and prescribing other related matters.
So Mayor, this is the staff summary that I passed out to each of you prior to the meeting. This BIL, so this is the bilateral bipartisan infrastructure bill, sorry, funding. This grant was identified prior to construction, starting at the airport on the 6T hangars, but we're just now getting the actual contract for it. So again, staff recommends approval. These funds were anticipated and were included in the budget.
Okay.
Any other questions?
No, no questions. Thank you.
And just one note, this grant is not like the other airport grant funding, so this one does not come every year. This is kind of a one-time thing, whereas we have the regular grant funding that comes through MoDOT that is federally funded, but it comes every year and accrues for so many years before we have to spend it. This is a one-time deal.
Okay. Moving right along, next up is reports of city officials, boards, and committees. Ms. Burbridge, you're up first, ma'am.
No report at this time.
All right. Now for my report tonight, they have a fall drive-through flu and COVID vaccine that the Health, Dent County Health Department is presenting as for Thursday, October 17th, from 1 to 6, and they will be hosting it at the Dent County Fire Station at 2 South Main. Healthy Dent County's Fashion Show at the Army is going to be held Saturday, October the 19th, from 12 to 2. Healthy Dent County is also hosting a Witches Walk sponsored by the License, or Salem License Office, October the 26th. It starts at the Tiger Trail at 1601 Dos Road, $25 per person. You register by October 16th to guarantee a t-shirt, and if you have any questions or need information, you can contact Jackie Cisco over there at 573-729-8183, or you can reach her at jackie@saloncommunitiescenter.org. And just one last reminder, citywide cleanup from GFL will start from October the 21st to the 25th, so if you have any of that unwanted furniture, please set it out. Other than that, that's all I have. All right, next up, Mr. Payne.
Start with the wastewater treatment plant, continued miscellaneous equipment repairs, testing, weekly sample runs to Springfield. Three team members are currently in a DNR wastewater treatment plant operators course that we are hosting over at the Healthy Dent County facility, so that's a good thing, moving forward with the education of our folks. Continued preparations are being made for Phase 2 of the sewer plant upgrades. Water departments repaired multiple water service lines across the city, continued training for their two, two, two new team members. We had the bid opening that we conducted for the new water tower. A lot of information there. Oh, no.
Not a bid opening, pre-construction?
Pre-construction, sorry.
Pre-bid meeting?
Yeah, yeah, not the pre-bid, uh, pre, yeah, construction, so. Lots of locates conducted by the water department as well as electric department. We fixed outages in three locations. We had one large outage that was due to a squirrel committing suicide at the substation, so. We repaired 18 street lights with malfunctioning dust till dawn sensors, so I'd always ask that the public, if you've got a light, this street light that you see that's on nonstop, just let us know. Call up 4811, and we'll make sure we get out and take care of that. The, the sensors go bad. Troubled shot and issue at Well 4 and help to get it back online. Line tree trimming crew continues work throughout troubled brushy areas in the lines across the city. Continued replacing several street lights, the old fixtures with new LED efficiencies, efficient light fixtures. Clarification, I had said we'd finish the Al Brown Field Project. We, we have finished our portion, but the contractor still has to finalize pulling wire, so that'll be totally done here hopefully soon, but I believe the contractor left to help out-of-state folks.
Yeah, to help with hurricane recovery.
So we, the electric department assisted the wastewater treatment department with motor lift replacement, locates, still conducting locates and disconnects. Construction department's working on several curb and approach projects currently, continued work on the animal shelter. Street department cleaned out stormwater drains, ditches, and debris. They continue to work on that. They cleaned, ditch clean out on Iron Mountain Road, extended two culvert pipes on driveways for residents, patched potholes citywide, and ran through all of their patching materials, so if citizens are seeing potholes, they're, they're, they're going to get to them, it's just taking a little bit of time, so. Brush hogged and mowed citywide, yard waste area maintenance was conducted, and that's about it. The mechanic worked on multiple fleet vehicles, made repairs on the boom mower tractor to keep it operational. The mechanic's everywhere, so kudos to him. Cemetery crew continued their mowing and trimming maintenance, as well as clean out of peonies in the, you know, for the end of the year there at the cemetery. Help set up and tear down for one funeral. That's what I've. That's what I've got. I want to remind citizens to call 729-4811 if the admin, the admin offices, if you have an electric, water, sewer, or street issue, so a work order can be initiated. That's how we track these things, the quickest way to get it done. A lot of times, I personally get calls and I, I just turn around and put a work order in, and so, happy to help, but that's, that's the process. After hours, police department, 729-4242 for issues so that an on-call person can come out and take care of those, so we can help out. That was a lot. There's a lot of me tonight, I'm kind of apology.
And the after-hours is for emergency situations, right?
What's that, sorry?
The after-hours is for emergency situations?
Yes, yes, yeah. Sometimes I'll, I'll get a call and they'll leave a message in, in my office, and, and I'm, I'm out in the field and I don't get it, and if it's a backed-up toilet and they think it's, you know, the, the line needs checked, that holds up that, that timeline, so that's why I just want to reiterate it. Admin office during the day, 4811 or 4242 after hours, so.
If I may, Steve?
Yes.
Just to kind of add on to your report, both the wastewater treatment plant Phase 2A and water well number nine and the new tower are both out for public bid right now. They're advertised and, and will be accepting bids for those, so.
Anybody got any questions?
No. Thank you for the report and thank your team for us as well.
Will do, appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Well, Melissa's out, so. Melissa's being out for her report.
Uh, yeah, so she has a kiddo at home with a broken clavicle, so.
Yeah, Kayla was showing me the pictures earlier. So I'm going to start this way and leave the excitement for last.
Oh, that's a famous verse.
Yes. Alderwoman Dent, do you have anything to report?
No, I do not.
Alderman Bullerjack.
Do have one thing to share. Tonight, I am announcing that I will not be seeking reelection as an alderman due to personal reason, and, and while this may seem a bit early, I wanted to ensure that anyone interested in serving our wonderful community has time to consider this opportunity. And filing for the seat begins on December 10th, and just want to share that this decision is not related to the direction of our city, the board, or the incredible staff that we are fortunate to have in place. We have a dedicated team that truly cares about the future of our community, and I'm proud of the progress we've made together over the last three years. And I've seen firsthand how much we can accomplish when we work together as a team, and I believe our city is on a path toward an even brighter future. I love this community, and it has been an honor to serve as your alderman. I will continue to serve until the municipal election in April, and we will likely share more thoughts at that time. And just want to say thank you for your trust, your support, and your commitment to making our city the best that it can be.
Well, thank you, and you will be deeply missed.
Thank you.
All right, Alderwoman Cisco.
I have nothing to report, but Sean, I do want to thank you for mentoring me and taking me under your wing when I first came on the board. It's been truly an honor serving under you, and it's going to be a loss to the city losing you as an alderman, so it's, it's been a great time. We've had our highs, we've had our lows, but together we stuck out as a team, and you've always given 110% to this position, and not serving with you is going to be hard, but, you know, we always want the, the best, so when we leave our place, we always want somebody better to come in, so I do encourage anybody who is interested in serving on the eastward side, reach out to Sean because he'd be the best mentor for you to get the best advice from.
Appreciate that.
He also is part of the mentor program, by the way, for the MML league, so.
He thinks he's leaving, but really.
Since you said that, she said 110. I'm going to give you 111, okay? All right. If there is nothing else, then all I need is a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
I second the motion.
I will call for the vote. Alderwoman Cisco.
Yes.
Alderwoman Dent.
Yes.
And Alderman Bullerjack.
Yes.
Thank you all.